It is 9:30. Trent, are you all set here? All right, then we will call the February meeting of the Wood County Board of Supervisors to order. I would ask the clerk to take the role, which I see he has already done and all of you have signed in. We have Supervisor Hoekamp on the phone, I believe. John, are you there?
I'm here, Lance.
Okay, thank you. And you're coming through loud and clear. We hear you well. Thank you. And then at this time, I would call on Supervisor Rosar for the invocation. I would ask the body to rise and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, everybody. So if you so desire, please join me in prayer. Thank you, Father, for this another day. Knowing how fragile life is, we thank you for it and for the many blessings this day will hold. There's oh so much to pray for: our municipalities, villages, towns, cities, counties, state and nation, and those who reside therein. Help us not to have a godless society. Help us to recognize the benefits of the Judeo-Christian values this country was founded upon and that have served us well for so many years. Forgive us for failing to remember those tenants. We pray for our military personnel, law enforcement, emergency medical responders, healthcare providers, and all who work to provide the services needed by residents across our county and our state. Thank you for the opportunity to serve in this way. Give us wisdom, direction, good judgment, and discretion, knowing that we will be held accountable for the way we govern and manage. We ask you now to be with us during this meeting. Give us safe travels as we are out and about. We acknowledge you as the Creator of all things and give you the praise and honor due your name. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you Supervisor Rosar for the invocation. First order of business today is, well, we, is to dispose of the minutes from the previous session, so I'd entertain a motion to approve by Hamilton, second by LaFontaine. Any discussion on the minutes? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. We have no excusals today, no resignations today. Is there any objection to me taking those two different appointments together to the ARPA Funding Ad-Hoc Committee and/or the Landfill Waste Standing Committee? Without any objection, then, I'd like to appoint the county board chair, the two vice chairs, and the standing committee chairs and/or their designee to the ARPA Ad-Hoc Funding Committee, and that committee will run until election time when we appoint the new committees. And then to the Landfill Waste Standing Committee, Roland Hawke, our Highway Commissioner. Entertain a motion of that effect. Again, Hamilton, second by Zurflue. Any discussion? Again, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed? And that motion again carries unanimously. Do we have any public comment today? Is there any public comment? My only public comment is a thank you to the Wisconsin Rapids, the City of Wisconsin Rapids, to the mayor and the group who allows us to use this room while our elevator is under construction. So, thank you, City of Wisconsin Rapids. Acknowledgements and recognition, we have none of that today. We have a fairly brief packet today, but we do have two special orders of business. And we have guests here from the UW Stevens Point Marshfield campus. We have UW Stevens Point interim Provost Marty Loy and our UWSP from Marshfield, Dean Gretel Stock, as well as Michelle Borki, who we all know. So, Michelle, I don't know who's leading this off, but the show is yours.
First test of the day. All right. Good morning, everyone. And again, I'm Michelle Borki, your campus executive for UW Stevens Point at Marshfield. And thank you for inviting us or letting us invite ourselves, I guess. To give you an update, and I did invite a couple of guests here with me. I am also a Wood County resident. I'm at 11096 Mill Creek Drive in the town of Lincoln. Been there for 34 years. So, thank you for all you do for Wood County. Hooray. Just want to give you that. Kudos. And with me today to tell you a little bit about what is happening on your campus here at the Marshfield campus. And with me again is our provost, Marty Loy, and then our dean of the campus, Gretel Stock. So I will turn it over to them. And thank you again.
Thanks, Michelle. And thank you very much for having us be here today. I was wondering if you could advance the next slide, please. Our reason for being here today is we wanted to give a community impact report and a campus update on things that are going on at the UWSP at Marshfield campus and how we're impacting students, our community, businesses, and others in Wood County and beyond. Next slide, please. So we get a lot of questions about who we serve, and a lot of folks focus specifically on our headcount of our enrolled students at the institution. We'd like to, of course, share that information with you, but no, there's a much bigger picture on our impact on the county and our impact on our businesses and students in the area. So, we are overall down about 15%, like all schools in the area. We are seeing the shift in demographics. However, the really positive news is we're up about 15% in new students this year. So that's great. So that should carry through to future years, and our enrollment for next year is looking steady, and we have an opportunity to continue to improve that in our headcount at the university. Our academic programs serve not only those on campus, but also our region as well. We have multiple dual enrollment relationships, both with our CISA's, which are the regional educational providers, but also with our high schools, including at Lincoln High School, where we have over 100 students in English and Physics enrolled in college-level classes right now. Very exciting for that partnership with Lincoln High School. We also, if you see in the pictures above me, you also see there our EDD in sustainability. There were about 75 students coming to campus over this summer to take part in their summer institute on the beautiful campus in, here in Wood County. So we're making sure that we're reaching beyond our traditional undergraduate populations and the programs that we serve. Marty is going to talk a bit more about some of the other impacts that we have in programs at the Marshfield campus and beyond. Marty?
Thank you, Gretel, and thank you for hearing us. We appreciate it, being here. And a special thank you to Michelle, who really does a lot of the great work that's happening on the, on our campus in Marshfield. And so I'm here to provide a little bit of the color commentary. Gretel will really give you the details. But I want you to know that our core mission is still intact. Our core mission really is to provide the associate's degree to residents in the county and, and to provide that in a way that allows for easy transfer to the bachelor's degree. But we do more than that, much more than that. And part of that is our, beyond our general associate's degree, you'll see up here on the, on the screen, we're now offering the MBA on, on campus. This has been a real successful offering. It's being offered on all three of the campuses at the same time, and each, each campus has its own group of MBA students who are pursuing and working together toward that degree. We also have our housing, the Eau Claire Nursing Program on campus, which has been a real nice collaboration with UW Eau Claire. It's a ongoing collaboration, actually, with, between us and, and UW Stevens Point. And, and when they were looking for a facility, we were there to, to help out and provide that. And so that's been very helpful as well. We also have the One Plus Two Plus One Nursing Program. That is a collaboration between us and the Midstate Technical College and also, so we're expanding that, that as well. I do want to mention that we're really have really strong demographic headwinds that we're fighting. Our rural communities, our population is aging. There are fewer high school graduates coming out of our high schools. And when we look back at the trends, I just saw a graph that showed the birth rate trends in Wisconsin, and it continues to decline. And so we will expect to see this decline over the next 20 years in, at least, in numbers of students coming, coming out. And so we're really working hard to expand offerings to capture those students who are what we call post-traditional students. These are students who have some college degree or are working and want to transition their careers, and that requires a little different type of, of education and little different, and different approaches. And so we're working really hard to, to provide college education to those, to that, that group of students, who, who is actually a growing group for us, so.
Thanks, Marty. And I would mention that we're looking at a multiple collaborative opportunities and new opportunities, like our finish-up program through our college business, our School of Business and Economics. That's a program uniquely designed to help students finish up if they have some college credit, which most, 50% of residents in, in Wisconsin have some college credits, but not a full degree, whether it's an associate's or a bachelor's. We also have partnerships with Midstate, with multiple programs. So again, we're trying to be the best partner that we can here in Wood County to support the citizens and the changing workforce and demographic needs. Next slide, please. We're also focusing on being a community resource and an incubator. One of the things that we've been able to do partially through Michelle's advocacy, but also core partnerships with the county, with the City of Marshfield, with the chambers of commerce in the area, we've really been focusing on being an incubator and being a resource to the community members and the businesses that are there. So we, we do have the retirees who come and help people with business plans. We have an incubator right now with Baca Chicken, which is a former food truck. They still do food truck, but they also serve lunch out of our campus and have been doing a growing business there, which has been great to help them get their business to the next level. We have our new Maker Space, which I know Michelle has come and talked to you and others about before, about how we're bringing both a K-12 educational focus to get our students learning these new 4D, 4K skills in manufacturing, to learn 3D printing, to learn imaging, to learn how to manufacture things on small scale, as well as product development. We're also, we've mentioned the four-year bachelor's programs with UW Eau Claire, all of our community engagement and artistic engagement that we have in the community. And we, we also have multiple opportunities for us to reach out and find out what's the need and how can we serve that need within the community. And so that's something we are actively engaged in beyond the degree programs that we offer. How can we leverage the assets and the resources of the university to serve Wood County? Next slide, please.
And so one of our core, core, part of our core mission is to serve the communities and the regions where we reside. And we do that in a variety of ways that are outside of the core curriculum that will, that we'll offer there. And this slide shows some of those ways. One of the issues in the, the region and the county are retaining employees. And so we've listened to what the needs are and have really tried to do some things that will help in that regard. One of those that we just opened was the Center for Inclusive Excellence. One of the things we found out is that a lot of small businesses, large and small businesses, want to learn how to better diversify their workforce and, and learn about diversity in their workforce. And so this center provides trainings for free for companies and, and large and small in the region in that regard. We also provide the Cultural Fair, which is one of the highlights on campus. If you've not been there, we'd love to have you attend the Cultural Fair. And we just remodeled and opened the Fitness Center and, and providing the arts, fine arts, music, dancing. I think there'll be a slide that shows just how many people participate in that, in that every year. And so we view ourselves and, as a partner in the community and in the vibrancy of our communities and are open to expanding in areas that will help our community.
So here's an expanded view of who we serve. And you saw at the beginning our enrollments and where those numbers were at the top of the chart, but this is a full view of all the people that we have been serving at our university over the last several years. And if you look at the bottom circled number there, that was our, what we call our baseline year before the pandemic, we served 7,700 people at our campus during that time period. And that's the kind of vibrant center that we want to be, not just our headcount in terms of the students who are enrolled, but the whole community impact that we have. That's what makes this your UWSP at Marshfield. We are, we certainly had about half of those folks during the pandemic, but even so, having half, I think we think is a really good marker, given the lack of activity that we had. But this year, we're back in person, we're back having performances, and we're back fully open as, again, your UWSP at Marshfield. So we really wanted to highlight all of the impacts that we're having on the community and, again, say that we are ready to partner with other opportunities in Wood County as they arise or as we find them through our advocacy and outreach.
So I just, just would like to say thank you. Thank you for your support. And I would open it up to questions. Yes?
Supervisor Clendenning.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I was very proud of the fact when I first come on this board and it was the UW Marshfield Wood County Camp. I'm very upset about the fact that in your speech yesterday, seven times you mentioned UW Marshfield Campus. And, and, and we're, we're not on the list anymore, really, as. And I'm, I, I'm opposed to funding this. I mean, with the STEM building and stuff like that, I was very instrumental in getting funding for that. And then all of a sudden, Wood County is off it. And I, I just don't appreciate that. And I, like I say, you mentioned five times UW Marshfield, never mentioned.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you, Bill. Any other questions? I guess I think Chris is, I really appreciate you coming in. I appreciate the overview. I had the opportunities up at the campus last week to look around again. Everything looked great. Thank you so much for coming in and appreciate your attendance in the future at different times. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, that moves us into the packet today. And we're going to have one other special order of business. Run that at the end of the presentation. So moving forward, we have no referrals, which is kind of unusual. And then that gets us into the packet as such. So we'll start on page seven. Page seven is the Operations Committee meeting of Tuesday, February 1st. That's on seven and eight. The monthly letter comments from the county clerk. And I'll remind everybody today. Go ahead, Supervisor Clendenning.
That, on page eight, I would say the third item down in bold where it says, "By Fisher and Rosar to approve light system by the ARPA funding." I, I just think this is very premature to, because when today we just formed the committee to go and say that this is the ARPA funding we're going to use for that. I, I, I think any ARPA funding should be kept separate in committees and everything. If they come to this board that was appointed today and say, "Can we get ARPA funding for this and that?" I think we're going to that committees and approving it at committees and then comes to the county board here, we're approving ARPA funding without it going through the ARPA people. So I was a little bit upset to hear that, at that. We're doing the same thing in towns and encouraging other towns to keep ARPA funding very much separate from anything else.
I'll let a couple of these supervisors come. We had a resolution to this effect, though. Supervisor Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to state, the reason we did that, Supervisor Clendenning, was at the last county board, it was discussed and approved that what was ever most advantageous, whether that was ARPA funding or using contingency. So I personally felt that since the board had already given direction on, we could do either, that it was the most advantageous. I respect your opinion about always having it come back to the county board, but I don't think anything was done inappropriate, because I feel like we were following the direction of the board at the last meeting. Thank you.
Supervisor Rosar, did you have a comment? Is there any other further comments there? Okay. That's page seven and eight. Then we have, again, the monthly letter comments from the county clerk, and I mentioned today is primary day, so I probably have to get him back to the office here sooner rather than later. Page 10, comments from the treasurer's office. 11, employee wellness. The first resolution in our package, packet is to accept the offer of sale of tax-deed property. I'd ask the clerk to please read that resolution.
This will be Resolution 22-2-1, "To Accept the Offer of Sale of Tax-Deeded Property." Fiscal note, the offered amount of $2,000 minus real estate taxes and tax deed expense incurs a loss of $140.28.
Okay, looking for a motion by Wagner, second by Bry. Any discussion? Supervisor Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It says that down towards the, under the City of Wisconsin Rapids, it says offered amount $1,000?
Yes, that's what, yes. I'm reading what you're.
But then the offered amount on top is $2,000.
There's two parcels.
For two different properties?
Yeah, there's two parcels there.
See one in, lot one and lot two?
Oh, all right. There we go. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And, yeah, just the clarification there. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? I'd ask you to please vote. Thank you. Supervisor Hoekamp, was it a yes? And that resolution passed unanimously.
We don't know that yet, Mr. Chairman.
Who isn't in?
We're going to wait just a second, because it's giving me the blue circle of death again. We want to see green.
I guess I saw the 19 up there thinking that was 19 yes, not the total.
19 have voted.
Have voted. That resolution passes 18 to 1.
See?
Got to learn to use their board up here. This is a new system, for those of you watching on TV here out in the public. I saw the total of 19 up there, and that was how many voted, not, not the vote total itself. All right, without, hoping not to make that mistake again, we'll move on. Beginning on page 13 in your packet, we have 10 budget amendment resolutions. Without objection, I'd like to take all of those together. Is there any objection taking the 10 of those together? All right. Trent?
Okay, here we go. Page 13, this will be Resolution 22-2-2, "To amend the 2021 budget for treasurer for the purpose of funding higher-than-anticipated expenditures." Fiscal note, "To transfer $37,065 from available balance and contingency to treasurer. At the time of this request, the funds available in contingency are $539,365. The adjustment to the budget totals $37,065." Resolution 22-2-3, "To amend the 2021 budget for workers' compensation for expenditures not included in the 2021 budget process." Fiscal note, "Transfer of $80,000 from available workman's compensation reserve fund balance. As of December 31, 2020, the fund balance reserved for work comp was $1,882,143. The adjustment to the budget totals $80,000." Resolution 22-2-4, "To amend the 2021 budget for property and liability insurance for higher-than-anticipated premium expenditures." Fiscal note, "To transfer $17,500 from available balance and contingency to property and liability insurance budget. At the time of this request, the funds available in contingency are $539,365. The adjustment to the budget totals $17,500." The resolution 22-2-5, "To amend the 2021 budget for coroner for additional revenues and expenditures unanticipated during the original budget process." Fiscal note, "No cost to Wood County. The adjustment to the budget totals $37,500." Resolution 22-2-6, "To amend the 2021 budget for emergency management admin function for the additional expenditures that was not anticipated during the original budget process." Fiscal note, "No additional cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unanticipated revenues from state aid. The adjustment to the budget totals $92,000." Resolution 22-2-7, "To amend the 2021 budget for emergency management building numbering identification function for additional expenditures that were not anticipated during the original budget process." Fiscal note, "To transfer $7,525 from available balance and fund balance to emergency management. The adjustment to the budget totals $7,525,025." Resolution 22-2-8, "To amend the 2022 information technologies capital project budget to include expenditures for projects that were in process but not completed at December 31, 2021." Fiscal note, "No cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is available unspent previously-approved capital project funds. Adjustment to the budget totals $328,482." Resolution 22-2-9, "To amend the 2022 information technology budget to include 2021 unspent funds for projects and hardware that were not able to be completed or obtained during the original budget process." Fiscal note, "No cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unspent funds from the 2021 information technology budget. The adjustment to the budget totals $98,500." Resolution 22-2-10, "To amend the 2022 maintenance capital projects budget to include expenditures for projects that were in process but not completed at December 31, 2021." Fiscal note, "No cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is available unspent previously-approved capital project funds. The adjustment to the budget totals $115,244." Resolution 22-2-11, "To amend the 2021 planning budget for Wood County bicycle and pedestrian plan function for additional revenues and expenditures that were not anticipated during the original budget process." Fiscal note, "No cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unanticipated revenues from a pass-through grant from the state of Wisconsin. The adjustment to the budget totals $30,800."
I had a motion by fire. I have a second by Hamilton. Heard the reading of all 10 resolutions. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Supervisor Clendenning?
Yes, I, I would like to know what, from, from the fund, how much of that was taken out? I know some of it is for, is this bad budgeting that so many of them may have to be taken out of the contingency?
So you want to know the total of the resolutions that came out of contingency? We have Ed Newton back there, the finance director. Ed, you want to give us an update?
On the contingency, just for these budgets here, we had treasury of $37,065 and the property liability was $17,500. So total on the contingency that we used was $54,565. Currently, our balance, because of nearest call and previous other ones, were, are available. Contingency now is $541,800 out of $600,000 that we budgeted for.
Thank you, Ed. Does that answer your question, Bill? All right, thank you. All right, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? I ask you to please vote. Supervisor Hoekamp is a yes. That resolution passed unanimously, 19-0. All right, moving along in the packet, page 23, the Health and Human Services Committee of January 20th, the Health and Human Services Committee meeting of January 27th on 24 and 25, the Board of Directors of North Central Community Action on 26 and 7, Minutes of the Veterans Service Commission, June 24th on 28. Page 29, their meetings from September 14th. Page 30, their meeting from November. Same commission. Page 31, their meeting from January. And that brings us to the Health Department's monthly report, pages 32 to 37. Sue, if I'm not imposing on you too much, would you mind just taking a second at the microphone and kind of telling them where we are in the whole mask mandate, COVID world we've lived in for the last year? Because there are some changes that are rapidly happening.
Sure. You've probably heard in the news that a lot, a lot of the schools are eliminating their universal masking requirements, going to mask optional. And I've been working with them on those decisions, along with a couple of local physicians, just to make sure we're all on the same page, we all agree with the direction things are going. We felt at this point, people have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. Schools also have access to free N95 and KN, KN95 respirators, both child and adult sizes. So if there are high-risk individuals in the schools, they can access those masks free of charge. So we were, we were feeling like it's safe to start going in this direction. Our case counts have dropped dramatically. I think in the report in your packet from January, I think I wrote it January 17th or 18th, we had over 170 new cases per day. Now we're averaging 34 new cases per day. So things are looking a lot better. Schools are still going to require isolation of positive cases, of course, as well as quarantine of their household contacts, but most are moving away from contact tracing. And I was on a CDC call yesterday, and they said, you know, this contact tracing thing really isn't all that effective. Yep. So we're all pretty much moving away from that. We stopped contact tracing, gosh, the end of like December, January, just because we didn't have the capacity to continue to do that. We had so many positive cases. So right now, we're still following up on positives, making sure they know what to do, asking them to notify their own contacts, talking to them about available treatment options and when to seek medical care. Our main goal being to prevent hospitalizations and deaths, so it's kind of where we're at. It's looking better.
Appreciate the update. Does anybody have any questions of the director while she's up there? Thank you very much, Sue Smith. Still have a hard time getting that out yet. Nobody's allowed to change names this year again, because I, I just can't keep up. But I did want to share that I've had the opportunity to speak to many of the superintendents in the last couple of months, and everyone has been extremely complimentary of the work the department has done moving forward in that regard. So I, I thank you. The other thing, a number of you were down at the WCA conference the other day, and one of the things I addressed is, we had a lot of problems, you know, through the COVID we had a lot of problems, you know, through the COVID times. But, you know, one of the, I guess, sentences I use, if you replace the word problem with opportunity, it's amazing how much we learned during that process. And we strengthened our communication, the ability to use virtual meetings if necessary. Uh, our health department, I'm sure, is stronger having gone through this as well as human services, communications, just about everything that we deal with. So, uh, as much as it's been a problem, it's also been an opportunity. I think going forward, if anything like this occurs again, we will be much better positioned in those times. All right, 32 to 37, any questions on the director's report? Supervisor Lightnem?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm on page 35 and looking at the environmental health report from Ben Jeffries. Mentioned there about groundwater issues. What I wanted to share with the board this morning is about 7:30 this morning, I became aware of a joint press release. And this is on water pollution and the expansion of animal feeding operations. I want to share just two sentences with you from that press release, and then I'd invite you to look at it. So the joint press release is from the Environmental Working Group, EWG, and Midwest Environmental Advocates, which is MEA. It came from yesterday, from Valentine's Day, from February 14th. So the first sentence I want to share with you says that using aerial imagery and publicly available data, EWG and MEA modeled current rates of application for commercial fertilizer and animal manure in nine Wisconsin counties. And I only bring this to you because we're one of them. Continuing that sentence, the analysis, which is the first of its kind in Wisconsin, shows that fertilizer and manure are being applied to farmland at rates that far exceed, far exceed what is needed to grow crops in the surrounding areas. The second sentence I want to share with you is the report reveals a critical lack of publicly available data which hinders the ability of state and local lawmakers, officials, to make meaningful action in addressing agricultural pollution. So those are the two sentences I wanted to read. And then I wanted to say that our state and local officials will have that data. In August, Dr. Carla Romano, who's working for the Central Sands Groundwater County Collaborative, will have the results from the gap analysis grant available to all of you. So that data will be there. The other thing I wanted to say is that in this press release, it's noted that county conservationists and local conservation departments are underfunded and understaffed. And so kind of in conclusion here, we were all alarmed earlier this week, maybe it was Sunday, to see from Wausau the number of municipal wells in that community that are contaminated with PFAS. And so this clamor for clean water, I think, is going to continue. I think it's going to get louder. In April of last year, we were one of three counties, Wood County was one of three counties that passed that clean water referendum. Now this year, two big counties, La Crosse and Eau Claire County, will be added to that, and I hope the results are similar. So again, I'd ask you to look at this press release. I just saw it at 7:30. I think it bodes, um, interesting days ahead for clean water. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Lightnem. And I was at, down in Madison at that ledge exchange. And prior to that, we had the Wisconsin County Association Annual Conference Planning Committee, where we set up what most of those breakout sessions will be now. Occasionally something comes to the forefront or light in between this time and the time we have the conference. But to your suggestion, water, PFAS, nitrates, maybe not as heavily addressed this time, as well as something that probably is important certainly to Saratoga Soul, or is another one of those that will certainly be on the agenda. So it is being addressed at a state level there. Appreciate the information, Supervisor Lightnem. Any other further questions on the Health Department report, pages 32 to 37? All right, moving on to the Human Services Department report, beginning with Director Ruhwings. Begins on page 38, runs to page 47. 38 to 47. Give you a second to look through those. Then the Veteran Service Officers Report on 48 and 49. And then that will bring us to the next resolution in the packet brought forth by the Health and Human Services Committee.
This will be Resolution 22-2-12, to create one comprehensive community service case manager position and two comprehensive community services coach position. Fiscal note, anticipated wages and benefits for all three positions totals $220,584.82.
I have a motion by Lightnem, a second by Hamilton. Discussion on the resolution. Discussion on the resolution. All right, seeing none, please vote. Hoekamp is a yes.
Blue circle of death. One moment, please.
We'll cut you a little slack. That's where I messed up before.
Oh, come on.
That resolution passes 18-1, 18-1. Moving on, page 51 in your packet, Minutes of the Seed Committee, begins on 51, runs through page 56. 51 through 56. Beginning on page 57, running through 59, is the North Central ITPEC Board Meeting from December 2nd. Page 60 is where we begin the update from UW Extension, and that runs through page 63. We have the monthly report from our land and water conservation, 64 to 69. Pages 64 to 69. Planning and Zonings Monthly Report, beginning with Director Grunenberg's on page 70, runs through page 75. Supervisor Ashbeck. Is there any other comment? Any other comments? All right, that was under land and water. And then we're at the Office Planning and Zoning, again, beginning with Director Grunenberg's on 70, running through 75. The Citizens Groundwater Group Meeting of January 17th, 76, 7, and 8. We have a plant review on 79. We have a memo here, some information on the private sewage on-site wastewater, and on 80. Beginning on page 81 and running through page 92, our various economic development funding requests that the committee has been going through one by one in detail, 81 to 92. Page 93, the junior fair yearly expenses. And then that brings us to page 94 in your packet, where there's a resolution, the accompanying, uh, information on pages 95 to 97. I ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 22-2-13, to authorize Wood County to enter into an agreement with Hilbert Communication LLC and its subsidiary broadband wireless internet service provider company, Bug Tussle Wireless LLC, to establish a public-private partnership for the purpose of applying for a broadband expansion grant with the State of Wisconsin Public Service Commission. Fiscal note, the county is not making an actual financial commitment by means of this resolution, but is expressing an intention to pursue broadband internet expansion if, in the county, if the funding from the State of Wisconsin, PSC, is in support thereof, is received.
I have a motion by Lightnem, a second by Zurflu. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Supervisor Clendenic?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just noticed with this, that so many committees are doing it. I'm just wondering why it isn't with IT when it comes to, well, we got Marianne Lippert and now this Bug Tussle and all that. How does our IT or our property committee fit into this stuff?
This went before all of them at one time, I'm pretty sure. I, the, obviously, the resolution came out of seed, but I know they've all, I know the pit committee addressed this. Director Kow, do you want to speak this? Jason, would you like to speak to this? Maybe we can get some information here that would help.
So I, I think when it comes to broadband, we've been, there's a few different committees that have had resolutions in front of them. Um, I think Operations Committee has in the past, as well as Property and IT, and also the Seed Committee. Right now, I, you know, we're, uh, my staff is working in cooperation with IT on broadband in the county. And a lot of times, it just seems to come before committees when it's convenient. Like today, it came before seed because, uh, we're in a tight timeline here, and we want to get this approval so we can get a grant in by March 17th. I know a similar application, or a similar resolution like this, uh, went before the Property and IT Committee last year. You know, I think that's one of the challenges of moving this stuff forward right now. It's, it's hitting a few different committees. But I think, uh, in the end, pretty much all the board members are seeing it come through some way, shape, or form. Any, any questions regarding that?
Supervisor Clendenic, yeah, I think timing is part of the issue here. And I know this has certainly been before the pit committee. It's certainly been before the operations committee. This is one of those where we don't have six committees.
Right.
Uh, listed on the resolution, but there's the one. Supervisor Clendenic, did that answer your question or not?
Yeah, yes, it did.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
So we had a motion. We had a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, I'd ask you to please vote. Hoekamp is a yes. That resolution passed 19-0. Thank you. All right, moving on in the packet, page 98, Minutes of the Judicial and Legislative Committee. That's 98, 99, and 100. Another memo from the county clerk on 101. There is, um, just an update here on a case. You know, we get these all the time, uh, whether it be claims or just an update on litigation that the county is, uh, involved in. And that begins on 102 and runs through 108. We have the monthly update from the Child Support Agency on 109. Corp Counsel, 110, 11, and 12. Second one from Corp Counsel, beginning on page 113, runs through 115. Monthly update from the Criminal Justice Coordinator on 116 and 117. That brings us to the next resolution in the packet brought forth by the Judicial and Legislative Committee.
This will be Resolution 22-2-14, to amend County Board Rule 13D so as to clarify that attendance at committee and county board meetings by supervisors via audiovisual and telephonic means is permissible. Fiscal note, none.
I have a motion by Bry, a second by Zurflu. Probably should look to my left once in a while, too. Not used to this room configuration here. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? All right, seeing none, I'd ask you to please vote. Hoekamp is a yes. And that resolution passed 19-0. Thank you. Again, moving forward in the packet, page 119, uh, Minutes of the Highway Infrastructure and Recreation Committee. That's 119, 120, and 121. We have the update, monthly letter of comments from the Highway Department, beginning on 122, and that runs through page 126. Monthly update from our Park and Forestry Department, beginning on 127, that runs through 133. And then we have a resolution brought forth by the Hurt Committee. On page 134, there's some accompanying information on 135 to 137.
This will be Resolution 22-2-15, to grant an easement to Oakdale Electric Cooperative for power line right-of-way on Wood County forestland and Wood County Parks property. Fiscal note, none.
Supervisor Clendenic, you wanted to make that motion? Yes, okay. And a second by Supervisor Hamilton. Is there discussion, any discussion on the resolution? All right, again, seeing none, I'd ask you to please vote. Hoekamp is a yes. And that resolution passes 19-0. Thank you. We have two resolutions here. Uh, these are standard. They come to us every year. They're to become eligible for maintenance monies, uh, and/or trail development, in some cases, without objection. I'd like to take these together. I see no objection. I'd ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 22-2-16, to become eligible for maintenance monies on the existing Wood County ATV intensive use area and the Kimball and Hazelnut Connector Trail. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. Total reimbursement from state aid registration fund and for, for the ATV intensive use area, donated services by the Central Wisconsin ATV Riders Club. And Resolution 22-2-17, to become eligible for snowmobile trail maintenance monies on the existing trails on county and private lands for the 2022, 2023 snowmobile year. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. Total reimbursement from the state's snowmobile aid account.
Thank you. I had a motion by Mr. Fire. Supervisor Fire, a second by LaFontaine. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the resolution? I'd ask you to please vote. Hoekamp is a yes. That resolution passes 19-0. Thank you. All right, moving forward in the packet, beginning on page 140, the Minutes of the Property Information Technology Committee. That's 140, 141, and 142. We have the monthly update from IT, beginning on 143, 44, and 45. The monthly update from our facilities manager on page 146. And then we have Minutes of the McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees on 147, 148, and 149. Any questions there? Any clarification? They've had a lot of meetings lately. Supervisor Clendenic smiling over there because they've met a lot. They're meeting from January 4th on 150. They're meeting from January 5th on 151. Any questions on any of those? All right, that takes us to page 152. That's the South Central Library System Board of Trustees, 152, 153, and 154. We have draft minutes here on 155 and 156 from the Wood County Library Board. We have the minutes from the UW Commission Meeting, uh, of November 11th on 157 and 158. And then we have minutes of the Jail Construction Ad-Hoc Committee on 159 and 160. And that'll lead us, well, yeah, we'll do that first. That'll lead us right into the Special Order of Business and Presentation by that committee. I'm not sure if Sheriff Becker's leading that, uh, if Supervisor Wallenstein, or if Kurt, Kurt's leading it? Okay.
I'll run to the podium.
All right.
Well, good morning, everyone. Um, we've been giving you a monthly update on the progress of the, uh, design of the jail. And I think the reason that I'm here is I delivered to the ad hoc committee some news last month about budget increases. And I want to be able to, to walk you through that, um, and have you understand how we got where we are today. Just want to walk you through the steps of the design process. And when you approve the project, Venturehead went through and formulated kind of a program, space program, based on the size, the bed count, allocated space for each one of them. And you remember, we had some colored diagrams that were not a floor plan, but it was more of a concept. The next step of design is they have to finish schematic design. And schematic design is where you actually develop a floor plan, where you start seeing doors and walls and things are connected the way that, uh, they are going to be constructed. And at each, the end of each one of these phases, we want to do an updated budget so that we're designing to a budget, so that we're staying within budget, that we're not allowing the project to grow, um, because that tends to happen. And there's two more steps. So we're at the end of schematic design. So we're at the end of schematic design with this budget. We will be, we're entering into design development now, and then there is construction documents. So you have two more phases that we'll have an opportunity to do budget updates. What I presented to the committee last month was an update at the end of schematic design, and that updated budget was about 15% to 20% more than what you had planned for, or what you had approved. And as I looked around the room, from all of the people that are in the room, it was kind of a shock, jaws were on the table, so to speak. And I attempted to explain what happened and what has transpired over the last few months. I think most of you know what's happening in the market, and, you know, indexes are starting to rise, and prices of materials, and all those sorts of things. But from your perspective, the questions that need to be answered is, are we growing this project? Has the sheriff's staff, have other departments come in and developed a wish list, so to speak, that all of a sudden you got approval and this building is growing? And I can tell you that the answer to that is a definitive no. There were some square footages that were required, and when we budget at the beginning of this, we go back to historical data of similar projects that we've constructed over the years throughout the state of Wisconsin, and that's how we establish a conceptual budget. And then we'd put some inflation, or some increases, increased numbers as to when you're actually going to construct it. It's not a, it's not a magic potion. There's data that supports how we put the budgeting together. What I see happening in that schematic design phase is sometimes that schematic design phase will increase square footage, meaning that it gets, the building gets bigger and budget goes up. That's not the case here. We're actually slightly under the square footage that we had programmed. And the unique part about your project is that the biggest portion of your project is a jail, obviously, because that's what we're building, and then there is a sheriff's office, sheriff's department that's attached to that. And I don't know if you recall, when we were talking about the concepts tied into how we were going to construct your jail, staffing was a big discussion, right? And what we ended up doing was stacking the pods so that we could minimize the number of posts, because every post that we add adds staff, right? To the tune of five individuals to that post, which equates to a lot of money, and we were able to reduce that. And when we did that reduction, the size of your pod grew. And what I explained to the committee is, if you looked at the pod, it's circular in design, somewhat, and octagonal in design, and it's done that for the purpose of having as many sightlines as possible from the control station into the cells. Okay, there's, there's a lot of logic behind that. But what that does is that because we wanted to maximize the number of individuals that are in each one of those housing areas, we started to see some square footage that's between the control pod and in the cells for day rooms, and then there's some circulation, that it looks like we've got a bunch of square footage in there that could be carved out, right? Because when I see that the prices go up, the first thing I have to come to you is solutions as to how do we save money, right? And I sit with my team, and my team's like, well, let's just, what's all this square footage that's in here? Because it's unique to your jail, because we were able to reduce the number of posts, but you had to have the sightlines, and the number of cells that are around the perimeter really determine the circumference of your housing unit. Okay? So you have some square footage that's in the middle there that we really can't just carve out of that, and then it's stacked, so you're seeing that in duplication. So there is some space in there that, I don't want to say that it's wasted space because it's necessary, but it's space that when you look at it, there's square footage in there. With all of that said, we didn't increase the number of square footage that's on, in the jail, or the building in general. What has happened in the markets is we have seen significant increases in some specific elements of your project. Detention equipment, and when I say detention equipment, that includes all of the doors that are included, all of the ceilings that are included that are a detention grade, and detention means that we're keeping people in a space, right? So it's a level of quality for that equipment have increased substantially over the course of the last few months. The vendors that we talk to, and the way that we price the schematic design is, we're not just making up these numbers within our organization, we send it out to vendors and start to get some feedback as to, if you were to bid this today, what would your cost be? And the detention number was way out of whack, to the point that we thought they had made a mistake, and their response is that over the course of, from pre-pandemic numbers until now, have increased about 400%. It's a big number. It's a huge number. And I think what you're going to ask is, are we at the peak, or is it going to come down? And I ask that exact question of these vendors, and they can't give me that answer. They can't give me a definitive answer. What they can tell me is that they continue to get information from their suppliers, is that we're going to give you this material price, and it's good for, if you're, if you're lucky, 30 days. Sometimes it's 14 days, and sometimes it's a week, right? So what I shared with the committee when we met last month is that the only way that you're going to see this number go down is if you start to cut program, meaning that you're going to have to reduce what the initial intent was of the jail. And that would mean, do we, do we reduce the bed count, right? And that would mean that we would just take portions of the building out that you had approved, or originally had decided that this is what was a need or a priority for your county. What I told the group is that I would be reluctant to advise that, and I wouldn't advise that, because what you would run into is then, we would open up this building, and potentially, a year or two years, you may have to house out of county again, and it would be short-sighted, okay? What I do want you to understand, and I don't know if I accurately portrayed this to the committee, is that when, when I tell you a 15% to 20% indicator, what we did is when we came back, the pricing that we got from our vendors was that you're about 10% to 15% over the budget if they were to bid it at that time, and we put about a 5% escalator that, when you're going to bid this later this year, that's where we're planning that's going to be. I hope that I'm wrong for once, and that that 5% isn't, isn't that case, and that it would come back and it would be lower, but I do want to caution you is that we could be wrong on the flip side, is that that number could be higher, because things continue to escalate. And, and I'm not doing this to scare you, I'm just giving you the facts. What I can tell you is that at the end of design development, we're going to do another budget update. So, design development is where we start to talk about all of the mechanical and electrical systems. So, right now, those systems aren't designed in the schematic design that we've priced, we've got placeholders of systems that we've put in similar buildings. Now we're working through the fine details of those mechanical and electrical systems, and when we get to the end of design development, we're going to do another budget update, because more information will be known that we're going to be able to share with vendors, and we will bring you another budget update at the end of design development. So, there were some discussions about how do we cut costs, and some of the things that you can consider would be early procurement of things that are going to be in the building that you could make some decisions on and say, yep, it makes wise, it makes good sense to make some purchases now, to procure some of the elements that are going to go into the building, okay? An example would be your emergency generators. We could talk to the team and say, let's size that emergency generator and make that purchase, and make the purchase, and, the funny thing is, in the world today, you could make the purchase now, and it's probably just going to get here when we need it. Typically, it would be purchase it and then store it, right? There's some IT equipment that could be done, the same things, that you could have early procurement. The other thing that is an early procurement discussion is, we had originally intended that we were going to have an early bid pack, which we would have bid pack one that would come out in May, and that would include all of your excavation, and your footing in foundations, and all the utility work, so that we could start that work while we were doing a bid pack two, and the bid pack two would be the balance of all that work. And I'm going to look for feedback from you as a group. Based on the unknown totals for the bids, I have kind of told the design team that I think that the sense of the county would be, you want to know what that all, what that complete number is before you move forward with what that overage is. And what that would lead us to is that we would just have one bid pack, so we wouldn't have bids done in May, we would have bids probably in July, which is the entire project, which is a change, but it is a change to be able to get you a complete number, okay? Now, if the sense of the board is that we're building a jail, and we're going to move forward, and we're going to give direction to the design team that you find every way to cut costs without compromising program, then that's a different discussion, because then I would be one who tells you, the sooner that you can get bids, the better, because every month that we've been seeing, that continues to increase, but there is, there is risk that you manage with that. So, I know I've rambled for quite several minutes here. I would like kind of a, kind of some sense from the group as to, what's your thoughts are with, with the next steps moving forward, and how do we manage that? And I will tell you, you're not the only county that's dealing with this. I've been dealing with other counties, and they're evaluating, and I heard the ARPA discussion, there are counties that, I've been at the meetings where they say, you know, we've got this money that we've been sitting on, because quite frankly, we didn't know what strings were attached to it, and now that some of the strings have actually been released, they say, you know, this was a priority, a top priority of our county, to the point that we decided we were going to move forward, so they're going to earmark some of those dollars there to offset that, without impacting the taxpayers. So, it's something that's happened at multiple counties, and, so, I'll shut up.
Kurt, yeah, I'm going to open this up in a second. My feeling is, you know, we ascertain the need. That was the first thing we did. We went through this process for a long time, we decided this had to get done, and that need hasn't changed. That kind of drives my thought process going forward. With that, Supervisor Wagner?
Yep, I've asked that exact question, and I can tell you that the answers that I've received are all over the board, and I can only, I can only give you the feedback that I'm getting from the vendors. Like, one roofing contractor that we had to a price on, had told us that he actually can't get the tapered insulation, so when you do a flat roof, the, the structure is level, and then there's tapered insulation that's below the waterproof membrane that's there, they can't get that tapered insulation, and then when they get it, they're paying double the amount, okay? The, in, the projections for just roofing between now and the end of the year, they're saying is double the price. Steel vendors, because we've got another project where we're starting to put schedules together in bidding, steel vendors are backlogged in regards to work, that if you, once you get your shop drawings in, meaning that, you know, they've bid the project, and they've put the shop drawings in, you're not going to see steel for six to eight months. So, when I hear that, it is product-driven, right? Not inflation-driven. But they're also telling me that the price of that product is increasing because of all of the other costs associated with it. So, I know exactly what you're asking, and I haven't, I don't have the exact answer for you, and I know why you're asking it, because it's going to lead you to how do you make that decision?
Yeah, Supervisor, I know, go ahead. I know what your follow-up is going to be.
So here's how I would answer that, is that you're not spending any additional money right now to have your design team design the project the way it was originally intended, okay? And bid the project out. And what I told the committee is, let's find ways to have alternate bids, meaning that they would be deduct alternates. So, let's say, for an example, we had some windows in some area, and we say, what if we just eliminated the windows? How much money can we save? And we have all of those bids. So, let's have some direction to have us bid out the project, and then when you bid out the project, let's see where the budget comes in, and you can see if I was way wrong, or if we were dead on. And then at that point, we have, we're further into the market, you're not committed to those dollars, you take the bids in, and then you can make a decision of whether do you want to wait and rebid it, because you don't have to award those bids, and we may know more about the market, right? I guess my, my direction to you is, don't stop the design process, don't alter the design process, don't just cut things out of there, because you still have opportunities to do that in the future.
Supervisor Fisher?
I would just like to make the comment, I think how I look at it personally, is we need to know, I want to continue with the design process, I want to get the bids, and I want to know what we're working with.
Yep.
So we can make an intelligent decision then. And I said this at the committee level, and I'll say it here, we're dealing with a lot of question marks, and we're dealing with a lot of what-ifs. I'd rather deal with more in fact, as much as possible, and so I think allowing the design to continue getting through the bid process to see what we're actually working with allows me then to make better decisions on what we need to do moving forward. So that would be my thought.
You know, I hate to kind of be that penny-wise and dollar foolish, this is a multi-generational project, and like I said, when you ascertain the need and you go through that process, I hate to alter that greatly, because the need still exists.
Absolutely.
I think Supervisor Valenstein, I think you had your hand up before? No? Okay, she can wait now. So, you know, one of the questions, Supervisor LaFontaine? So, you know, what I'm hearing is, it may moderate to some extent due to the supply chain, but it's not going to go back to where it was. And that comes back to that question on early procurement.
Right.
And, you know, and I guess from my perspective, if I, when I build things for myself, I was looking, if I had the opportunity to buy something now, I would probably do that, especially when we're looking at things, your generator issue might be a really good one. That might be an instance. Supervisor Lightner?
So, yeah, before the chairman started talking about early procurement, I was wondering, I jotted down 15, 20 minutes ago, you said emergency generator, I heard IT equipment, now I'm hearing maybe steel, electrical. If we would to, if we were to early procure many of those things, probably, you know, there are 15, 20 other things that I just didn't read off here. In a $63 million project, would we procure $10 million worth?
That's probably a high number. I don't think you would, I don't think you would be that high. If I had to guess, you're probably in that five to seven, is what I would guess. And, and again, it would be, we would need feedback from the design team, because I haven't talked to them. Like, when you talk about the steel, structural steel may be an element where we, even if we would get it a month earlier, it may make sense to do it, but like, generators are things that we could probably push them to do something within the next month. And the reason that things, these things, I'm bringing this up as another county, we were working on some IT, IT equipment, and we knew that we needed to purchase it, we were going to purchase it three months from now, and they said, hey, we just got notice from our supplier that if you don't order it by the 15th of the month, it's going to have a 17% increase. 17% on 300 grands, a big chunk of change, right? So they made the decision is, we're going to need this anyways, let's procure it, right? Yeah, right.
Laura? Supervisor Valenstein, sorry.
Thank you. So before we wrap up, I just want to make sure we all have this in mind. We like to try and conduct an informal poll, or a straw poll, just so that we can get a general sense going forward of our two options, but to make them clear, option A would be to begin bidding key items and contracts, and proceed with early procurement of those items, take advantage of current market prices. Or option B, hold off on bidding so that all bids come in at roughly the same time, which may or may not result in bids being higher, but would allow the board to scrap or significantly limit the scope of the project if we feel that the financial impact is too great.
All right, so I guess the question she's asking, I would just do this, you know, kind of by a show of hands, to give us a little, the committee a little direction. You know, the first question is, do we proceed down the early procurement road? And the other one is, you wait and see, and... And I think, I, I won't make any comments. I don't disagree with what has been said so far. So, let me just ask this, and I, I would guess, call you, who'd be in favor of the early procurement process? Would you raise your hand? Thank you, Supervisor. Is it, is it your right hand or left hand? All right, I think, I think we have some marching orders there. You, you have some direction.
Yep.
To supervise, and that's why I didn't want to comment before we conducted that. I think to Supervisor LaFontaine's point, though, we may see prices moderate. You're not going to see them go back to where they were. Construction lumber, you know, a year ago is a good example. I mean, it went through the roof, and then when you look on a board foot cost, it, it went down significantly again.
But it's come back up. I don't know.
It's gone back up again. So, but my point is, with early procurement, it gives you the ability to look at that market.
Yep.
And to have those conversations with those suppliers as we move forward. So, we took a picture of all of you who raised your hand. No, we'll, we'll go down that road and
Absolutely.
See if, does that make sense? Supervisor Valentine?
Yes, thank you very much.
I do have two photos before I leave. Go ahead.
Supervisor Clendenning, go ahead while we're on this.
Yes, I, I just like, if you remember about eight years ago, we were thinking of a $52 million project, and there was going to be a campus for the courthouse. Who's going to buy property across the road and things like that? And then what come into the picture was the river block building, and we purchased that for five. Just remember, I know this is hard to figure out, but that's $47 million we didn't spend. And I'm also with the South Central Library, and we were building, going to build a building in Madison, a new headquarters for the South Central Library system, and that was going to be $5 million. We just took a vote on it at our last meeting, and it went up considerably. It went up to 8.75 million. And so they wanted this straw pole from our board, too. And we had about an hour's speech on it from, from different people, and indicating that, you know, you always say these town boards, county boards, they, they spend money that your grandchildren have to pay. Well, I'm going to tell you, your grandchildren, your great, 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 great grandchildren, if you don't do this now, are going to have to pay. And, and to do it right, that, that's what they were trying to do in Madison, was trying to cheapen things, take out a bathroom and things like this. And, and that didn't work, because four or five years from now, you had to put in different ones. I say quit buying all this stuff from China.
Well.
Yeah, but I, I think it's a good idea to go forward with it.
Yep.
You're not going to get it cheaper.
Yeah, I, I think to sum up what Supervisor Clendenning's saying is, if you need a car to haul a family of four, it doesn't do you any good to buy one, a two-seater. It just doesn't work. And at the end of the day, like I said, the need was the part that drove this. Kurt, I'll turn this back over to you for the
Yep, I'll keep this brief, but I just want to show you the things that we're going to continue to do to save money through the design process. So, I know the sheriff had given you some pretty pictures, I think last month or the month before. And you probably won't even recognize this, but on the outside corners, there used to be a jog on the addition that was there. And Ruben just asked me, he says, hey, can you run some numbers if we just took the, the corners out of there? And so we ran some numbers, and, you know, it's about $75,000 to $100,000 of savings if we take the jog out of the corner of the building. And most of you probably didn't even know they were there, right? And that was the sort of discussion that we're having. The other thing is, the, do you have the other picture, Trent, of the front? We have one more, right here. So, you can see the windows that are on the three levels there at the front entrance, and then there's that, it looks like a precast band, it's not going to be precast, but it looks like a precast band that separates them. There's, there's two different ways that that glazing can be put in. One's called storefront, one's called current wall, one is a structural element, one isn't. The storefront is cheaper. This option right here saves about $75,000 than what we had originally budgeted. So, those sorts of things, we're going to continue to do, and we're going to challenge that as we move forward, to the point that you probably won't even recognize those changes, but we're going to continue to do them. It's not going to offset the 15 to 20% increase, but anything that we can do to help it, we're going to continue to do it. So, all right. Any questions?
No, I think, and I'm confident, you know, as I talk to other counties who've gone through this process, and some of them have gone through it with, you know, you and your group, you know, I'm very, I'm confident that we have the right people working on the project, and at the end of the day, we're going to get the, you know, best bang for our buck.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We will obviously have this as an agenda item beside your committee running this at every county board meeting going forward, so we get an update, see where we're at. Doesn't mean we have to have everybody in, but we'll have an update. So that tells you not to leave again. All right. Moving on in our packet here, we have, we have one last item of business before us today, and a number of you, or at least a few of us, served with Laverne Rigel on the county board. And I think a number of us attended his services and/or visitation up in Marshfield last week. You know, Adam's got a relationship, Donna was there. Donna, you want to make a comment before we get I as well had the opportunity to go up and meet some of the families, share some stories with them, and I'll just share one quick one. After Tony had stepped down as the county board chairman, he called me and asked, he said he had a few papers he'd like me to pick up. So I went to his house, and for the next half hour, I carried boxes of papers out of the, I thought he'd have a folder, but it was box after box of stuff that he had retained over the years. Supervisor Ashbeck. Anybody else before I get to the resolution?
I'll jump in if I may, Mr. Chairman.
You sure may.
I did go up to the visitation. I had served with Tony as well, and friends of our family for 50 years. And he still stayed active with public service. You know, we talk about his public service, and we sent him the directory every year. He requested it. He even requested, God, I don't know why, God love him, but the proceedings from the county board, every year, he, he would request that we'd send him the proceedings, and we did, you know, it was just, but that was his way to keep up. I mean, he was sharp right up until, right up until the good Lord called him home. So, that was cool.
Supervisor Clendenning. We, and for that, we forgive him now, reluctantly. All right, so there's some stories shared. I will turn this over to our clerk to please read the
This will be Resolution 22-2-18 relating to the life and public service of Laverne Tony Rigel.
Okay. You have seen the resolution in front of you. I would ask for, I have a motion by Supervisor Fisher, a second by Supervisor Fire. All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to note that that was obviously unanimous in support of his life and service, and I would ask this body to please rise in respect and silence. I thank you. Yeah, you hope at the end of the day that you all have the, the impact on your community that Chairman Rigel had had. Is there anything else to come before the board? Anything else come before the board? Our next meeting is scheduled for March 15. I guess don't forget to vote today. That would be my charge, everybody. Anything else? I'll catch that between the Olympics. Supervisor Ashbeck? Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, with that, we will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.